New order. Disposure, pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. Approval or amendments of meeting agenda be it resolved that council approved the agenda of the regular meeting dated October the 12th, 2021 as amended. A mover in the second or please Bill and and Matt. Discussion. No discussion, all in favor. Harry. Approval of minutes. Be it resolved that council approved following minutes as presented. Regular meeting of council September the 21st, 2021. A mover in the secondary, please. Joe. And Matt. Do any discussion on the minutes? All in favor. Harry. There any business arising from minutes? Any inquiries from the members of general public? Delegations and presentations. Paul, you're first on the. Yeah. Oh. Yeah, you're second, sorry. Yeah, it's okay.
Thanks for letting me speak here tonight.
No problem.
Yeah, it's regarding the. Snow removal by law, I guess everybody knows. Well. Yeah, I would like to retain my ability to keep putting snow at the under ground view like I've been doing through the last, you know, 16 years. Just a little history on this. This snow removal at my place has been been done by loader for the last 50 years. It is. And it was my father before me and when our loader wasn't working, we would get somebody into the cell. And it was always that way. It was always moved out of the driveway. Oh, to the front of the house and, you know, the town works guys would take it away most of it, you know, it wasn't a problem. So anyway, nineteen ninety four. Then they shut down the road going down to the train tracks. I think everybody remembers that road going down there. It was re all redone. And we kept doing the same thing, kept putting the snow in front of the house. And not only us, our next door neighbors at fourteen grand, you were doing the same thing. And it was a bit of a, it was a bit of a hassle. It was too much snow to be put in front of the house. And, you know, problems arise and, you know, public works didn't want to take it away any longer. And, you know, for good reason, I mean, you know, it's their time and everything else. And that was fine. So the council at the time. Came up, you know, with. With an idea to. Take the snow no longer put in front of our house and there's a fire hydrant there too. So which is a good idea and not to put it for the house. And put it at the end of. Of the grand street, which was a really good place for snow. It's out of everybody's way. And that's what we've done. Since. Well, two thousand and six, that was two thousand and six. At fourteen grand view, ten grand view. My other next door neighbor and also Wayne's garage and it's four households putting snow there, not just ours. Because there's absolutely no place to put snow there. I have so much snow in my yard that if I would put it in my backyard or my front yard, there's no way my my foundation can help. It's impossible. I just, it would just flood up the basement. It's a finished basement. It's it's just, and actually, I probably flood out my next door neighbor's garage too. I mean, there's so much more there. So. We've moved snow there. I've moved snow. Without incident, I haven't gotten an accident. I haven't, you know, God forbid, run over anybody, you know. It's a very dangerous corner. It's a very dangerous corner and. Without taking the snow away from that corner. Just backing in and out of the yard, not only for me, but even for the person that fourteen grabbed you. You know, it's not too good. You need room, you need room. That street, that corner. For many years was always one of the first corners to be done. In the whole town. That was always done. For the last 10 years. Well, I can't say ten or nine, one, nine or 10 or whatever. It's basically the last place to get done. So what I'd have snowbanks. If I would move that snow, I'd have snowbanks. On either side. Would and being very hard to back out or into that into that driveway. And people are coming around there at sixty kilometers an hour, going way too fast. And it's unbelievable. And you know, you just constantly got to watch in the winter time, the winter time is very dangerous. So, but anyway, I've been moving snow there without incident. And. I heard. Public Works. Said that the ice, the sidewalk was getting icy last year. I guess this was. So I bought salt. I salted the, I salted the sidewalk every time like it was icy. Sometimes it wasn't. I even took sand off the road and I shoveled it onto the side. Because I heard that's what they wanted. So that's what I did. I mean, I'm doing everything. I keep the, that's the cleanest fire hydrant in town, by the way. I mean, you know, I keep the fiber hiding, cleaning, everything clean. They're talking about water shut offs. I put a pipe where at the end of gravity, there is a water shut off. I put a stick there so I don't put any snow on it. I'm doing the best I can. To, you know. Just. To get through this, you know, and. If you. There is no other option for me. There's no other option for fourteen grand. There's, there's no place to put snow. Without a huge expense to me. So they say rent a truck. Well, you know, it's expensive enough running my loader. If I rented a truck and a loader, if I can't use my loader, I'd be over $200 every time it snows. I mean, it's just not cost. It just, I can't do it. I can't do it. And by putting that snow. There at the end of grand. It doesn't affect anybody, anybody. It's a perfect drainage. The water goes down the hill or the tracks. There's not an issue with anything. It doesn't block anybody's visibility. And the times I did want visibility. If I did. With the snow that on the road. Is because I was, I was backed up with the snow at the underground. You have a two wheel drive loader. It's a reconditioned loader. It runs like a new one, but it's only two wheel drive. I cannot push that amount of snow over that hill. So if the town, town leaders come by with their loader. I have my ice, I have, I push the snow back as far as I can and they bring the loader and pile it right in front of mine. Well, eventually I get backed up and I can't nowhere to put that snow. It just keeps coming, coming, coming. So I leave it on the road. There's no, there's nowhere for me to put that snow. And that's why it gets backed up once in a while. They're not helping you. At all, the last eight years. You know. And if you don't allow me to retain this, this. You know. If you rescind this letter that I have. Won't be able to get out of that driveway. I don't know what to do. I just, I. I'm done. So that's, that's all I got to say. And you know what? If you make sand available for me, if the sidewalks icy, I'll be gladly glad to put it down, glad to put it down. I have no. Issues with any kind, any sort of that kind of stuff. But I don't have any sand. But, you know, but I have salts and, you know, you can use salt. And the reason, another reason I I've heard that, like, you know, they don't want me on the sidewalk. The reason I use the sidewalk more than the road. Is because, like I said, it's a dangerous corner. The more I can, I can see a pedestrian. A lot further than I can see a car coming around that corner at sixty kilometers an hour. So I could see if it asks you to take some a while to get to me. So I stopped the loader and let him go by. But when I'm on the road. I mean, these guys are coming so fast, you know, I'd rather not. I try to stay off the road as much as possible. You know, that's the, that's the reason, or else I'd be on the road, I mean, you know. I just, I don't want, I don't want any trouble. I don't want no conflict. And, you know, that's why I do that. Okay. And but and another thing too is. The people at ten grand will also have a letter of permission. To put snow at the underground view. Now those, that was the household before it was sold. And that was Browns that owned it before. They also got the same letter that the town didn't want any snow put by that fire hydrant. So they told us to put it down at the end of that, you know, grand.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
That's all I got then, okay. Anybody got a comment, question for Paul? I'm gonna just start stop to let allow brief questions, not to. We'll discuss it more when we get to the byline eleven point two. And then we'll get back to you with the recommendations from council.
Just one question.
Yeah.
Paul, you, you said for 50 years, your dad was putting snow in there too? Like same place or?
No, no, no. Well, before, like, the road used to go down right to the train station, right? So there was. You remember the way it was when the road.
Yes, I remember the road.
Yes, he would put snow in front there, but it was a totally different setup back then. Okay, you know, and that's, but it was always done by loader. Yes, I got it.
But it's been done since they blocked the road and they had no further road there. And that's when you start putting the snow there. Yeah. You said two thousand and six.
Well, in nineteen ninety four, when the road went through, everything changed.
Right.
So we started putting the snow still in front of the house. Whereas it wasn't too good like that, but that's what we were doing, right? The next door neighbor was putting it there too. And then the town work guys would take it away either by truck. Or push it over the hill. And then, you know, that just got to be, which is right. It's not, it wasn't a good, wasn't it?
So when did you actually start putting snow in there?
I started in two thousand, two thousand and six, when I, like, when I received the letter from the town.
Oh, you got the letter permission.
Yes, when I got the letter permission, because I mean, you know, before I didn't have that. So we just kept doing the way we were doing it. And it's not a very good, you know.
Okay.
The way you're doing it. And yeah, so. Since two thousand and six and that.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's always clean when I'm done. It's just that I got it, you know, it takes time. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chideron, one more, one more question before you go. You were saying that you have an estimated cost of $200 per snowfall or heavy snowfall. You're a. Drop in the fall snow.
Go ahead.
Is that correct?
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Paul, is there room for sandbox on somewhere near your driveway?
Well. I think by the total post might be able to put a sandbox around there. I mean, you know, it. On the one side of my, on the one side of the property. But that's not my property, it would be the town, town's property.
But would that facilitate you being able then to both salt and sand?
Yeah.
Were required?
Yeah, sure. I put it down, no problem. I mean, it doesn't have to be there anyway. It could be even further down. I just go pick it up and bring it in, bring it over. It doesn't have to be. I'm sure there's some location that we can come up with or, you know, we can get some sand around there somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot, Paul. We'll discuss it again when we have the byline eleven point two and. We'll get back to you.
Do I say?
You can, if you like, it's up to you. So you, you won't be able to protect in the discussions.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Hey, Miss Wilson. Please.
Thank you for letting me come tonight to speak to you again. A couple of council meetings ago, the town's official plan was discussed and tourism was brought up as an important part of that plan. And to the Cobalt Historical Society, this is heartening news. As many people who come to the town. Come to visit the Heritage Silver Trail. However, more recent developments give us a mixed message about the town's support of the Cobalt Historical Society. And as councillor Anderson warned at the last meeting, the future of the trail is now at risk. Before I explain the current challenges before us, I think it's important that we recap of who we are, what we do. Because it seems that there's possibly that the town has a different understanding of that. When you review the town of Cobalt's website, there's an entry there for the Cobalt Historical Society. And it says that we are a group of individuals who dedicate time and energy to maintaining the history of the Cobalt Mining Camp. This camp takes in the town of Cobalt and properties throughout Coleman Township. They produce a regular newsletter which features insightful articles about historic people or places. Now, while that's technically accurate, there's considerable detail missing. Yeah, we are volunteers who are fulfilling a commitment made decades ago. That is, the Cobalt Historical Society is a partner in a joint venture with the town of Cobalt and Coleman Township. We are a bona fide nonprofit corporation that was created to allow the town to access funds to build the Heritage Silver Trail. And this trail was a town of Cobalt initiative. We act as agents of the town, working on your behalf to apply for funds. And at the time, we applied for funds, administered the project, and after the trail was built, we continued to develop and maintain the trail. As well, we promoted mining heritage by several methods, including a regular newsletter. So yeah, we're a group of people dedicated to Cobalt history and yes, reproduce a bulletin, but we do a great deal more. To illustrate in my package, I included a trail report and an expense report for your information. So far this year, we've spent over just $13,000. This is money that we have had, we acquired through memberships, fundraising donations. And the annual Timistamine Foundation grants on the Agnico Eagle Fund. And as we all know, Cobalt has closed several tourist attractions, but the trail has remained open. For two summers now, we've noticed decreased traffic to the sites and to the town. Also because of COVID, consumers have extra money to spend. And so with the easing of restrictions this year, knowing people have a pent up urge to travel and to spend. We capitalized on that and we produced souvenir puzzles and that cost us $5,400. Our gamble has paid off and the puzzles are very popular with local residents and visitors and Cobalt fans across the continent. Deborah Ranschuk, our secretary and also merchant in town notes record breaking business this year due to increased traffic to her bookstore. In part, not completely, but in part due to the two to those puzzles. So far this year, we spent $7,600 for sign replacement, which is carried out by volunteer labor by our board members and in kind support of Coleman Township. Summer staff from the mining museum also helped by clearing brush from several sites. Countless volunteer hours have been spent assisting with research queries, several of which have been forwarded to us by the town. And I've been the primary heritage consultant for the TVO documentary, which was filmed here recently. And I am presently helping the curator of the 2024 McMichael Gallery exhibit featuring Cobalt paintings by a group of seven artists. In recent years, I have helped authors, Deborah North, write her book about Cobalt women. And I spent a year helping an author from the United Kingdom with research on an early Cobalt stockbroker. The first, the few proceedings of this, proceeds of this work have gone to the Cobalt Historical Society. Presently, I'm working with a biographer of an, of an early photographer. And again, I have spent many, many hours helping him out. When we were able, we meet with visitors and give them personal tours. A couple of weekends ago, the chair of a new historical society from Elliot Lake Mining Heritage again, came to town to learn how we conduct our business. Sometimes people will offer to pay us for our work, but we do not accept payment, but we do. Accept donations, whatever they wish to donate. And the last request that came to us from the town. Ended up in a $300 gift for the work that we did. So those are examples of what we do to uphold our end of the partnership to the benefit of the town. As for what the town has done to fulfill their commitment to the joint venture, here's what we see that they have done for us. We are grateful for the use of the Penn Silver Headframe Building, although we have not used the space to meet for the past couple of years, primarily because the stiff lakes have rendered the place unsafe. And then more recently, COVID restrictions have meant we can't meet face to face. In the past five years, on one occasion, the town provided in kind labor to shore up the Right Away Mine Foundation. And annually, the town purchased a $50 membership from the Cobalt Historical Society. For comparison, the other partner, the township Coleman, has donated $10,000 over that same period and regularly maintain the roads to the trails. Or pardon me, the trails to the sites. And now I come to the main issue that has brought me here tonight, and it's the issue of liability insurance for the trail. Twenty years ago in two thousand and one, the town signed a memorandum of understanding that is also included in the package. And this was signed between Agnico Eagle and the town of Cobalt. And the town agreed to identify Agnico against any claims related to the use of the trail. To us, the Cobalt Historical Society, this meant that the town agreed to provide liability insurance for the trail. And it has been the general understanding ever since then that this has been the case. And even as recently as two thousand and seventeen, when we met with Mayor Sartoretto. It was her understanding that the town provided liability insurance for the trail, both in Cobalt and Coleman. As it turns out, however. The town does not, nor has it ever had, insurance for the trail. And this, of course, is very alarming news, not only for us, the Cobalt Historical Society, but also for the Cobalt Mining Museum, who rely on the trail and the Colonial Additore. Um, which is a major source of their income. We approached Agnico, Agnico Eagle and asked if they would be okay if we purchased insurance. They said they had no objections. Assu, um, for us assuming the liability for the trail, but they would first have to terminate the agreement with the town. So we're wondering if. By that statement, they also understand that the town has insurance. Knox Hutchison is the broker who arranges the insurance for both the town and Coleman. We approached them and they prepared a quote for us. Unfortunately, the cost of insurance is affordable or appears to be affordable, at least to us. We've also attached a quote here in your package. So given all we have of regarding the what went before and what our current problem is. Given that without insurance, the trail must close. And without the trail, Agnico was free to fulfill their closure plans and destroy the remaining heritage that still stands. And the town desired and arranged for the Heritage Silver Trail twenty years ago. And it was the town as well who desired and arranged for the creation of the Cobalt Historical Society. With the understanding that the town, township and Cobalt Historical Society would be partners in the operation and maintenance of the trail. And that the town has recently discussed tourism as a key element of their official plan. And that mining ruins and relics on the Heritage Silver Trail set Cobalt apart from any other tourism destination. The Cobalt Historical Society requests that the town, as a major beneficiary of the trail, formally reaffirm their original commitment to the partnership. With the township and the Cobalt Historical Society. And that the town pay the insurance so that Cobalt Historical Society continues their work as agents of the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Maggie? Okay. We have time to review this request. We've got a little bit of time yet, I would imagine it.
Um, the sooner the better, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there still no sending matter to structural evaluation going on with the ONR and the Ministry of Northern Development Mines?
Uh, that's still under.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And until that happens, I don't believe we can do a whole lot of anything.
Um. I think it's separate matters.
Just one second, done.
Uh, yes, thank you, your worship. I, I think this matter of insurance is something that bothers me greatly. I, I think it must be. Attended to one way or the other, whether the town buy the insurance or we give a grant to. The historical society and let them buy the insurance, but I would like to see a report by our next meeting so we could approve something on that order. And get that taken care of. I think we can do that much at least. Uh, also want to take this moment just to thank Maggie and all of the volunteers for the historical society. Who are doing a really, really good job protecting and preserving what is the key features of any kind of tourism or historical. Venues that we might ever have in this town. And I thank you all very much for your support.
Yeah.
Bill and then.
Yeah, through you, your worship. And I'll direct the question to you, Maggie, maybe you may know, but my concern here is. When you talk about Agnico Eagle and you said they had no objections to the Cobalt Historical liability for the trial. However, they would have to terminate the agreement with the town of Cobalt. I don't know what that agreement is. I'd like to see what it is.
I believe you're referring to the MOU that's in the package. It's, I believe, the last page in the package.
Read that. Okay.
It's bad. First of all, I'd like to compare with Council of Wocox, like, this is signed for what they do. And I am in agreement with Council of Wocox as well. It's a total cost. That you're looking for for the insurance, thirteen hundred and sixty one dollars.
That's correct. Yeah.
Plus any applicable taxes. That, that's.
Correct, eight, eight percent taxes. Yeah.
And that's the, the annual premium that is outlined in the document here.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And I, I, I too would like to have something put forward for the next meeting so we can get this cleaned up as quick as possible. We have, uh. We have an organization like the Startup Society, who's put in a lot of work to the trail and it looks as though after reading. This letter of understanding or. River animal of understanding. That this was an agreement that was put in place back in two thousand and one. So I'd like us as a municipality to. And then move forward.
Go ahead, Matt.
I'd just like to say to all of you, I was part of getting that agreement. That. You know, we came to our pension and had to be a necessity. And that was another time when we were. Facing an Agnico. Getting pressured by the government to get rid of everything. So then they put pressure on us and. When, uh, you know, when we got this letter of agreement for the trail being insured by the, by the town. Then Agnico sat back and relaxed. Agnico. Doesn't want to have to take down all our history. First of all, they are very proud of that history and they have done a lot. Since nineteen eighty seven, when we start first started working on it. Uh, they've been a great deal of help to us. And as well, of course, let's be realistic. If this goes down in the tubes and then the government pressures unique ones is okay, it's got to go now. It's going to cost them tons and tons of money. But every. Every vestige of our physical history out there, every mill foundation, every head frame. Everything has to be returned to the environment like it was never there. Um, our tailings areas. That, you know, we look at and to me, they're, they're beautiful too. And they do grow some new stuff on it. It's a really great natural environment there. That's naturalizing itself. All that would have to go. So it would change the landscape up there tremendously too, so.
Okay, thank you. Here, we will definitely have something on the next agenda for. Insurance. And get back to you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I'm very proud of what you're doing. You're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And all.
Okay, business arising from delegations and presentations. Okay. Staff and committee reports. Nine point one, Public Works. Any questions on the Public Works report?
Just one, your worship. Am I still on?
Yeah, you are.
Oh, good. Hey, how about that? I, my screen's gone weird here, so I'm just playing with things. I, I noticed that, that the Public Works Department managed to pave some of our grass in boulevards through town. And a little swatch of grass in front of what was the inch building. Uh, and I really kind of. Unhappy to see that happen. I would have much preferred a ground cover or some alternative to pavement. It is a feature of all of our towns and cities that we move towards greener aspects. And I think more pavement is not really what we would have liked to see. Uh, but it's done now and hopefully it'll solve some problems. Uh. But at some point, we might want to revisit that and see just what we're doing with the greening of our town. Uh, other, other than that, I've nothing really to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Pat.
Well, I'd just like to thank Public Works for. And. Our engineers for the great tour. Out at the water plant in Friday, it looks. So, thank you, pass me, thank you on the rest of it.
Yes, and on that note, there was, the press was there and there should be a very extensive story about it and. Uh, hopefully a lot of people will learn what, what we have going on there. It's quite an expensive process. It's very interesting to see how it operates and. There has been a lot of money put into it, but it's worth every cent because water is our main, our, our best company. Comedy, commodity, I'm sorry. Any other questions from Public Works? By animal control. Several reports here because she had computer problems and couldn't submit a dime. Bylaw enforcement. My officer is diligently working away at trying to clean up some places. I seen him out there again today. He wants some work. We're getting our good bang for our buck there. Nothing else for the reports? No comments, okay? Be resolved that council accept the staff and committee reports as presented. Mover and a second, please. Pat and Joe. Discussion. Already all, all in favor? Harry. Items for council direction, ten point one, resolution to discontinue for the discontinuation of winter park permits. Be resolved that the practice of issuing winter park permits be discontinued and that the traditional users be informed immediately. A mover and a second, please. We have no mover and no second. Matt and Bill. Thank you, folks. Be resolved that the practice of issuing winter park permits be discontinued and that the traditional users be informed immediately. Moved by Matt and second by Bill. Discussion.
Through your worship, questions for admin staff? How many permits are we administering? Or, you know, how many permits are applied for during the winter season?
I believe there are twenty-six.
Part two to that. Of the twenty-six permits, do we know how many are to seniors or people with disabilities? Who would need accommodations close to their residence during the winter season?
I don't have that stat.
Yeah, thank you. Angela.
I'm kind of confused by this because during our winter meeting last year, I thought the whole rationale was also to use the information on the parking permits for having residents move their vehicles or to also get in touch with them to move their vehicles in order to facilitate snow removal. So, and I believe it's also to offset some of the the costs associated with the snow removal. I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. But I'm just kind of curious why we flip-flopped on this. Like, why, I get that it's something that takes time every year to get them out. But what's the rationale for taking them away now?
I suppose the, just the term parking permit is kind of redundant because when the snow plowing takes place, the vehicles that have such permits have to move the vehicles. So it's, it's been, I think, agreed that over the years, it's been more of a, not so much a perk, but an easy option not to have or provide your own parking stalls where a number of houses or dwellings can do so or provide alternate, alternate parking. So it ends up being quite a time-consuming process using the permit fee. So by eliminating it, it eliminates or it encourages people to find parking spots on their properties and reduces the amount of when the snow falls communications, if you understand, by having to deal with twenty or twenty-six people. So to be more effective, and now that we're passing bylaws that control traffic and everything else, it gives more of an option for effective snow removal, because as you know, it's a challenge in Cobalt. And it seems that the parking permit process that was, I think, put in place to help with the that challenge has proved to be not effective. And as such, we've, we're asking for it to be removed and that we are going to be dealing with individuals who have traditionally got their permits. And we'll be discussing with them possible options and hopefully we can get that cleared up.
Angela, Doug.
Um, okay, I get, I get what we're saying, but there's some cases where people don't have an option to have parking on their property. And I know that of those twenty-six, some of those that have permits, it's for parking. And I get that they need to move them for snow removal, but it allows them to park overnight in front of their house. Which especially if, one, you're disabled, two, you're a senior, or three, you have young children, is definitely something that needs to be thought of. And we have to allow some conveniences to our residents if we want to continue to attract residents. Just my humble opinion.
I would like to congratulate Angela on her humble opinion. I think it's a very valid one. And Matthew as well. I think it was a good question. I would suggest that if even one senior or one disabled person who requires a parking permit to be able to have his vehicle closer to his house, then that system pays for itself. It is a good thing because we are here to serve the residents, not entirely Public Works. And I sympathize with Public Works and trying to do a smooth job. I get that. But I think very much we're also here to serve our public. And if our public needs something like that, and if something like that will guarantee them that kind of access, then I think we should keep it.
Through your worship, another question for the administrative staff. Is this something that was brought up by Public Works or is this an administrative issue? Or?
Through you, your worship. So what we've done over the last four or five months is try to address every operational problem that comes up in the snow clearing, snow plowing process. And that comes up on an annual basis as being an issue. To my knowledge, my best estimate, I think there are two of the twenty-six that likely have no other options, no other onsite options, so that the intention is Public Works and our bylaw officer will work with those two individuals in the hopes that options can be provided. I don't believe that we're dealing with a situation where we're discouraging or discriminating against anybody that's disabled. So, because what happens now is when we have a snowfall where we have to get in there and plow, it's always a short notice situation. So when you have a short notice situation with twenty-six, that's awkward compared to a short notice situation with two or one. And that was brought up with a joint meeting with bylaw, Public Works Administration.
Go ahead, man. Could this be a matter of just typing up the permit criteria and maybe having site surveys done similar to the fire chief coming to inspect for a fire permit? We could have someone from Public Works go and see if there's any alternatives to parking, provide a couple of options and set a more stringent criteria based upon ability to get to the home or, or let's say someone with a disability, just so we can still provide this opportunity for our resident?
Certainly, the whole intent of trying to get that through tonight is that we can now start the communication process where we can deal with individual traditional permit holders. And they do change over the years, but not so much to make sure that we reduce whatever, you know, major problem is in place. Now, that's our intent, is to implement a protocol of communicating with the people. And Public Works also knows, knows best as to where the options are. And knows best where individual properties have the ability, if they desire, to provide their, their own parking.
Thank you. Doug?
Yeah, I'm still very concerned. I'm hearing a lot of vagaries about numbers of people who need or don't need. And, you know, the issue that is always brought up never seems to be brought up by the permit holders. At least, nobody's mentioned that as yet. And I would think if I were a permit holder and I had a piece of paper that said I get to park there, that's a comfort issue for me. I like to know that I'm in control of where I can park and where I, it can't be butted out or moved out by anyone else. And I think that's important to some individuals. I would like to know how many individuals. We've heard twenty-six and then we hear, oh, it's really just two. That's a pretty big variance. So I'd like to see some much harder numbers before I would accept this proposal. Thank you.
Pat.
Okay. Look at it, say, we don't really need to, if, we don't want to pass this tonight. We want to find and find the people that absolutely need these parking permits. We don't need to say, no, there will be no parking permits. We need to find those people and make sure they're accommodated. Because parking permits are renewed each time. The ones that don't, really don't need them, don't have to be issued one. Rather than just going whole hog and saying there's none and freaking out some of our neighbors in town that really do need it. I'd like to see this just be administrative.
Angela. You're muted.
Okay, quit hitting that unmute button, Mr. Host. I know you're trying to help, but I'm trying to unmute at the same time. Anyway, I agree with Pat. Rather than abolish the policy, address it on an individual basis and become more stringent on who we give them to. Because the other thing we need to look at is, yeah, maybe they've got a spot to park a car on their property, but do they have a spot to put snow after they park that car on their property? Because then that's going to create another whole big can of worms. Where are they going to put their snow? Something we need to consider. One solution usually creates a few different problems.
The only thing I would like to know, to you, your worship, first, the criteria for giving out these parking permits. Like, who sets that criteria? What? So somebody comes down to the office, they look and I need a parking permit. What is the criteria?
Really have to. Dave, could you answer that?
Yeah, just come and get the permit, okay, or whoever's there.
Yeah, but.
That goes back to.
I understand, but what is the criteria? What did you say? So I just want a parking permit? Or because I'm disabled, I can't walk, I need to get close to my car? Or what is there? Is there some kind of criteria that you go through before you allow the ticket?
Sort of on the permit. I'd have to look at the permit again. See what's on there.
So you mean anybody can come down and say regardless if they have lots of parking and say I want to park out here because but, I mean, surely somebody comes to you and say, I'm disabled, I need a parking permit. There's got to be some criteria that you use.
No, not really.
I think we have to tighten up that.
Go ahead, Angela.
I'd like to suggest we defer this because it seems like there's more questions and answers at this point. And let's gather some more information and take a really hard look at this. Because we're really quick at doing things, but then we end up changing it a year or two down the road because it doesn't really suit. So while we're looking at solutions, why don't we look at something that's still going to be good five years from now, ten years from now, rather than to have to keep revisiting everything over and over again?
Okay, absolutely. Bill?
Yes, through your worship. I agree with Councillor Ags at on that. That's very good. The thing that my mind is, as a councillor, I don't want to place undue hardship on anybody, especially somebody that's disabled. So that's why I'm talking about a criteria. You know, I'm not saying everybody needs it, but I mean, at least have a criteria that you're not, something comes to you, look at, I need to have a parking spot because otherwise it's going to, we're placing undue hardship on that individual.
Okay. Go ahead, last one, Angela.
Sorry. And I just also wanted to impart, I actually stopped to assist a resident last winter who was walking to the municipal parking lot and took a flip in an icy parking lot, straight back and landed on his head. So, well, it may seem like a good idea to send them to different lots. I think we need to also be aware that sometimes the conditions of the lots need to be, we need to keep a closer eye on them as well and make sure that they're sanded adequately and maintained so that our residents aren't facing a risk by parking there themselves.
Okay. Thank you. So do we need a resolution to defer? Or do we vote this down and then defer to another?
We just postponed to the next meeting, George.
That's correct. Deferred in the next meeting.
Okay, we'll defer to the next meeting. Further discussion. Okay, ten point two, resolution to amend by the twenty twenty dash fifty users' fee schedule for the town of Cobalt Facilities and Services. Be resolved that Schedule B to by the twenty twenty dash fifty is hereby amended to include the following statements of fee under the fire service fees, recover cost of extinguishing open air fires, actual cost. A mover and a second, please. Pat and Angela, discussion. All, go ahead.
I just felt somebody should say something. I think it's about time we did this one.
Okay, very good. All in favor? Harry. A resolution to defer implementation of by law twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five to provide for licensing and regulations for residential units in the town of Cobalt to April first, twenty twenty-two. Be resolved that implementation of license protocol for by law twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five be deferred to April first, twenty twenty-two. A mover and a second, please. Pat and Doug. Any discussion on the matter?
Go ahead. Through your worship, what is the reasoning to defer this or yeah, for this to April first? We worked hard to put this in place and look after multi-residential unit issues. And I'd just like to know, is there an administrative hurdle that we need to get past or climbing?
Josh?
Thank you, worship. The, the report that showed the rationale, I think, just sort of speaks for itself. This is a new era or area that municipalities are stepping into where a lot of us are trying to control some of the issues that result in absentee landlords and everything else. And it is not only a bit of an onerous administrative task to identify all multi-dwellings and landlord versus property owner tenants and everything else. So administratively, once the initial work to put that task together and get it ready for implementation for January one, it soon became apparent that we would be rushing things too much and not only rushing an implementation protocol, but also rushing, rushing things at the one of the busiest times of our year. So with New Year's and New Year turnover and everything else, it's just an awkward time. And because of the workload that we've experienced in the last two or three months and expect to experience the next couple of months, we're seeking councils kindness and allowing us to implement this at an April one date as opposed to a January one date. We want to make sure we get it right because it is going to be questioned and it will be challenged. And we'd want to make sure that once the protocol is in place, that it's doing what council wants it to do as opposed to just another piece of onerous red tape.
You could have that, yeah. It, all in favor? Harry. Okay, item ten point four, recommendation to approve option three to fix and repair structural issues at the Fire Museum food bank building at an estimated cost of twenty thousand dollars. Be resolved that town of Cobalt hire a firm to do an emergency repair for the Fire Museum food bank building in accordance with option three, and the engineers report in this matter. A mover and a second, please. Matt and Doug, discussion on the matter. Go ahead, Bill.
I agree to the proposed repair and with option three. The only thing that I want to make clear with council is that this is a huge. The only thing that I can make clear with council is that this is a huge liability that we have here. And the engineer proposes repairs. Uh I guess he went through it. This is what we have to do. I think as owners of that, we have. An onus plus to ensure whoever gets the job, whoever the contractor, that they have to be well informed of what they're getting into. And also I would like to see a uh. A procedure from the engineer who's recommending the proportion pair so that they follow it step by step. So we have to be able to cover ourselves here. This is scarce, this carries, if they're going into a building that's. You know, people have turned away from it because they think it's unstable. So I suggest that that engineer. Who's proposing the repairs comes up with a job procedure, wherever the contractors and goes over with. And I I would like to have a copy of that. If that's possible.
I second that, actually. Uh that's extremely important on the health and safety aspect and for liability for for the town. Uh this is something we can't sit on too long, because who knows when that wall's gonna fall. It's ten years, could be a month, we don't know. And also to get a a real good firm to do this job, it'd be nice to have a one stop shop, have an engineering firm. Have their own contractors, everything all in one shop deal. So. Something we should look into, may have to look from outside of town for someone like this.
Okay, any other comments? None? Okay, that building is definitely a nice store and Angela. Okay, Angela, go ahead.
Sorry. I and I don't know if it's possible, but when we're contracting a firm to do this, can we have some kind of? Cause we we had somebody that was gonna do this before and they walked away from the job. Um I'm not sure if we paid them anything or nothing, or is there some kind of? Some way we can cover ourselves so that if we pay them part of the money and they walk off this job, that we can get some of that money back from them? I'm just thinking it's happened once, so.
They didn't necessarily walk off the job. They left the job because what we were requesting them to do was unsafe. And would not have served our purpose. And would be back at it again today as we are now.
I thought we put it out for tender according to what the engineering firm told us needed to be done.
You know what they suggested should be done and it didn't work out because of unknowns to them and to us more. Okay, and then excessive, yeah, more damage being done. But the Bill and Joe have very good idea. Let's get a step by step procedure as to what's going on. I think Joe has a very good idea. You guys were supposed to go through there. Did you just go through it? Not, okay. Okay. It's a little different plan that we're we're looking at now. And once we have an idea what it is, we'll let everybody know. Okay, all in favor? Harry. Okay, ten point five, a resolution supporting phenomenal effort to petition the province material consolidate. Agencies to address the ordinary materials crisis and addressing challenges with mental health and addiction services. Now, I could read all of this if I like. I'm hoping everybody else did read it. It's kind of very near and dear to us. I think it's something that we definitely need in this area and all of them are, as far as I'm concerned. I'll need to move her in a second, please, Matt and Pat. And discussion.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Through your worship, just a comment consolidation of these agencies just leads to a more efficient way of tackling the matter. Or the associated matters, especially with illiterate issues and mental health issues. So I'm I'm in. Full agreement. This uh this is something that should take place just to focus the efforts and and get actual solutions in place sooner than later.
Okay, very good. All in favor? Harry. Items for council information, eleven, eleven point one, by law to regulate traffic and parking of vehicles in a town of Cobalt. Be resolved that by law number twenty twenty one dash thirty two being a by law to regulate. Traffic and parking to vehicles within the town of Cobalt be taken and read the first and second. And finally passed, third and finally passed this twelfth day of October twenty twenty one. I move her in a second there, please. Joe. And Bill, discussion. Go ahead, Joe.
I'm in agreement with, I agree with the with the by law. However, uh the places where there are a lot of problems where it's. Quite evident that the cars are parking. If you're gonna put parking, no parking signs, I'm not sure if that's the plan to put no parking sign, but if they're gonna be put in place. Put them where the infractions occur, not two or three hundred feet back in front of somebody's place or something like that, but wait where they occur. Would be my suggestion. Okay.
Angela.
Um. Okay, this is another one where I think we need to take a long second sober look at this. I'm I'm not disputing it needs to be done. It definitely needs to be done. But we need to think about this because with every administration change, the thought changes and the message changes. And we we keep, we keep going over this one over and over again. There's definitely areas where there are parking issues. Um I can name quite a few off the top of my head. And in some places are not as bad as some people are thinking they are. Um some of our residents are confused by it as well. Um. And I believe that some individuals that this impacted uh need more time to respond to it than they have had. Um being that it was just sent out on Wednesday. So this is another one I would like to push back, defer. Um and all of us take another look at it. I looked at um some of the one-way street proposals. I have a bit of an issue with them only because I do live on a laneway. Mine, I don't think is one of the ones, not from what I've seen anyway. Um and where it may be. Feasible to go one way during one season, it's not feasible to go that way in the other season of the year. For example, where I am, um in the winter, I have no problem coming off of Nickel onto Baker. But in the winter, I have a real problem going. From Baker up on to Nickel. Or from entering up on Nickel. I prefer to use the bake, um the entrance over by the high school. Um I've, cause then I'm not taking my life in my hands by coming down a hill where there's a guardrail and a big drop. Um on icy roads. So I think that's why we all need some more time to actually go through this a little more thoroughly and look at it. So that we don't keep changing it from year to year. Or as things arise, we can think ahead and have something that's gonna do us in five years, ten years.
Joe. Um this has been brought up to my attention today is something about past councils and when they did the role. We moved the yellow line on the corner of Wayne's Garage. Well, the name of this company, okay, I think the Wayne's Garage Company where the the line is. Now, some of three feet they got moved over. I'd like to. Follow up on that, see if that was done, is if that is the case, then it does have purpose place.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure who the, Dave, do you recall any of that stuff?
Just for me, it was given to me and I can't really pass this until we know everything, all the info.
I think a certain individual took it upon himself to put the yellow line where he thought it should go. And it ended up confusing a lot of people.
Now, that being said, is can we not contact Ministry of Transportation or something to come do measurements? And find out what are the legal, where where it should be?
I guess we could. I'm not sure who would give us that the information.
Yeah, I do recall, you know, when that, when that went through. That there was quite a complication because of it and um. It was like that's where it was put and that's where it was supposed to stay. But no reasoning for it or anything. And it has, it has created problems for for his garage since then. But one way or another, it's a really bad sharp corner with.
It is.
A lot of snow and a lot of vehicles there.
Be something I'd like to look at before I pass this. So I agree with Angela's deferring this.
Yeah.
Okay, can we defer this one also to the next meeting then? Can we get more? Go ahead, Doug.
Just a second thought and I agree with uh all of the comments thus far and certainly want to defer it for a little bit because. I've been trying to go through it point by point and my head is quite swimming. I wonder if we might get some kind of a uh. A a brief report on what's changing from the previous uh bylaw. Uh for parking in designated spaces, et cetera, at all. Uh because it's very difficult to go through this and try and relate it back to that and and forward again. And it's it's getting most confusing for me anyway. And the second thing, uh Bill's point about putting up signage, I'm still looking for signs on Cobalt Hill when we get into the winter months and with no parking. And uh they seem to have been gone for two or three years at this point that I've been looking for them. Uh perhaps longer. So I would like to make sure that any place that we've designated as no parking is properly signed. Uh I think that's critical. Thank you.
Yeah, I totally agree with Counselor Wilcox on that. You need to sign.
For sure. Angela.
Um. And just to further to Counselor Wilcox's comments about um the old by law and what's changing with the proposed new by law. Uh barring that, even a map with marked locations on it would be definitely make it a lot easier going through the by law.
Okay, right. So we'll defer that. Go ahead, John.
Um from an administrative point of view, it would be better if we gave it two readings and um. Another three weeks for folks to come up with their questions. Uh I'm not sure how a deferral is going to work in this particular case. In so much as the points that I've heard tonight are. Are built into the by law, so I'm not, I I'm really unclear as to what to bring back to council other than what is there. I don't, I have no problem. If it's the intent of council to pass a by law, and that's what the administration wants. So that we can clarify things. Obviously, the by law itself has parking provisions in it. Uh that has to go to the Attorney General. Um these provisions would not go without the proper signage. The proper signage is all built into the uh, is an implementation once the by law is put in place. So. Uh deferring this again is putting uh. We have to be careful as a municipality where our responsibilities is like the snow removal by law. We. The municipality has an authority. Uh authority of jurisdiction. In other words, the roads are our responsibility. The safety of the roads are our responsibility. We're not a landlord to a a property that has to deal with their own um snow removal or snow plowing or whatever. We have to be careful. That we're um working under the legislative responsibility of a municipality as opposed to. Uh um concerns of a landlord on a particular property. I'm just gonna say that out there. So. In my mind, if we want to ensure that we get these things straightened out, I mean, it's easy to say it keeps changing, it keeps changing because sometimes you don't. Set it down in in writing and pass it and get the proper enforcement abilities. So. Uh I'd ask that the the it be given two readings so that at the next council meeting. Uh questions could be answers, a report can be provided by administrations. We have to be. Uh aware that if we are going to act responsibility uh in enforcing the road. Uh in the safety of the traveling public, uh that we have the the proper bylaws of which we have not had. Nor we had, we had the ability to write tickets. We've always had the ability to warn people. Uh and we know how far that goes. So that's why these bylaws are in place to. Um bring some clarity and fairness to the situation.
Okay, but that's such as if we just read the first and second and did the third reading next, the next meeting.
Sounds like there's some answers on the line, yeah.
Angela.
I guess not. I just, I don't understand whether we do a first, second reading or we wait till next week. Or when we get the answers that we've asked for tonight, which are on the yellow line. Um some clarification and for some time for everybody to review this by law and for the people impacted by it to have time to address. Put into address council. Um whether we do a first, second tonight or we do a first, second, third, at the same time we get the answers. Just saying, I I I'm not getting that part. I I would hope it means if we do a first, second, we you don't proceed and start enforcing part of this. Without it passing a third.
Has to be passed the three times in order to get some action on it. So CAO's recommendation that we uh do the first and second reading and the third one at the next meeting, when we get the answers. Doesn't get a third reading, it doesn't go through. Is that correct, John?
That's correct.
That's correct. Are you good with that, Angela? Go ahead, Doug. Doug, you're muted.
Very good of you to notice. Thank you, George. Yeah, uh as I'd mentioned earlier, I would really like to know if any of the changes or whatever is done in this by law. Are in fact any changes to what is currently the situation, just to highlight. Uh what areas might be changing, if any, uh just so I can have a look at it and see if that makes sense to me, too.
Okay, so are you good with first and second reading tonight and the third reading, uh when we get the answers?
Yeah, that's fine by me.
It's why we'll reread the by law then. Be resolved that by law twenty twenty one dash thirty two have been a by law to regulate traffic and parking of vehicles. Within a town of Cobalt be taken as read a first and second and finally and uh. A first and second time just on the twelfth day of October twenty twenty one. All in favor? Harry. Okay. Eleven point two, by law to regulate the removal and relocation of snow within the town of Cobalt, repeals by law twenty oh eight dash twelve. Be resolved that by law twenty twenty one dash thirty three being a by law to regulate. The removal and relocation of stolen the town of Cobalt be taken as read a first, second. And third, and finally pass the twelfth day of October twenty twenty one. I move her in a second, please. Matt and Joe. Okay, let's have a discussion. Go ahead, Pat.
So this is the one that would. Uh be specific to Mr. Chirone's problem. And just going back to his presentation. I remember, you know, we talked to to him before and I understand administratively. John, you, you know, you said about insurance wise on the town. Um I understand that part, but. I also understand their problem and they have been since two thousand and six. Moving the snow down there, putting it down the hill, keeping things open and clear safely for for them and the people going around the corner. And I still think that part should be allowed.
Bill. Well, uh to you, your worship, uh you stated this case here in front of us. And uh we went ahead with this and uh wasn't allowed to do it. Just to, to me, it's a clear case of undue hardship on a taxpaying citizen. Uh who came and made a, to me, a good presentation and gave uh some good, made his good points. I would like to see something that by law is not black and white. It shouldn't be black and white. We need to have some cases, there has to be some exemptions here. We need to do it. We need to have a variance of some some sort, but I. I I would, uh I cannot vote for something like this, uh that's gonna affect the taxpayer uh to this. To the, to the additional cost. First of all, he's generous with his cost saying, says it's only gonna cost him two hundred dollars to hire a dump truck. I would say it's probably gonna cost more. Um that's just not fair. And so I'm supporting a variance of some sort in this by law. That we'll take that into consideration.
Okay, through your worship, I concur with Counselor Gabani's statements. We we've heard from a rate payer in town. I believe that by passing this by law, we will put undue hardship on. On said rate here and it doesn't just affect the the delegation that came here to make, present to us. In his explanation, he also said that it affects two other households and a garage and a business in town. Uh there hasn't been any accidents. That we, to our knowledge, uh no significant. That we, to our knowledge, uh, no significant damage caused by the removal of the snow or the deposit of the snow into a, a different area. And by passing this bylaw, again, if the snow can't be removed, we are literally putting undue hardship on, on the rate pair. Not only for still removal, trucking it out, but potential property damage issues. So. The rate period seems more than, more than willing to work with us with regards to the sand and salt concerns on the sidewalks. And we do have, again, other households who have the same letter of understanding to my knowledge as well. So I, I can't, um, as Counselor Gabani stated, I cannot vote in favor of, uh, of this bylaw. Until we have some sort of variance in place that accommodates for the special cases such as someone that was brought for us tonight.
Okay. Go ahead, Doug. Muted, Doug.
Yeah, yeah, you can always tell when I lean forward, I'm gazing into that mute thing and trying to figure out where the red line is. Uh, it's, might get it messy. Uh, I agree wholeheartedly with the previous speakers. I think, uh. Uh, Mr. Chideroni has demonstrated that he is very reasonable in his efforts to do it safely. And willing to comply as much as he is able to and as much as we might be able to help him comply. Uh, so I think we should make an exception for that kind of thing. The other one I would raise and. In our winter from hell that we got a couple of years ago with all that snow. Uh, I was a little bit tardy getting out to shovel out some of the street snow that the plow piles up. Uh, on my alternate parking space in front of the wall of our house. And, uh, the support worker from, I believe it was CCAT. Uh, was unable to park in front of the house and therefore was unable to park anywhere because they have a policy that says. You must park in front of the residence to which you are going to be working or in which you're gonna be working. And, you know, it strikes me that if people are disabled and needing support workers to come in and help them. They're probably not in a position to rush out and get rid of snow in the middle of a snowstorm either. Uh, which might then compounds the problem even more for them. So there are lots of things, I think, that we do need. To be able to make exceptions for and perhaps find a way that the town can assist those kinds of people. When it comes to removing snow and making access available more immediately. Uh, so yeah, I'm gonna agree with everybody, what everybody has said. And as, as presented, I can't support this. Thank you.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, just one more thing. Uh, this issue has come up for the last three years since I've been on council every year.
This issue's come up for many, many years.
Is there something that we can do to finally put this to rest?
Well, I would like to see then two of you, uh, counselors then get together with the Works Department and with the homeowner and come to an. And green result. Because it's been going on for way too long. Yes.
More than willing to do that for your work.
Angela.
Yeah, and I agree. This is something that, again, I, I seem to be sounding like a broken record tonight that we need to take a long, so got seconds over. Look at, cause let's find a fix that's gonna work, passed just immediately. And I agree, he was reasonable. He's willing to do what he can to work with the town within limits. So we have to make sure that we're being equally as. I don't wanna say accommodate, well, yeah, accommodating and try and work with him as much as he's trying to work with us. Rather than just digging our heels and saying, no, it's all our way. Which seems to be what I'm hearing here. Just saying.
Okay, so do we have to form an ad hoc committee to do this or just? Information gathering.
I think the ad hoc committee is a good idea, George. Uh, we've got two counselors that volunteered to help out on it. And perhaps they can come up with a really good recommendation for us.
Well, I'd like to have Public Works then on it and the homeowner in on it also.
Uh, again, though, as, as I was trying to point out too, there will be other things as well that we might wanna take into consideration from other people. Uh, who perhaps aren't even aware of this kind of thing at the moment.
Go ahead, Matt. Through your worship, I'd like to speak to the other homeowners as well, as well as the business that could be affected by this. So I think putting together, uh, an ad hoc committee. With Counselor Banny and myself, Public Works, to go and get the information required and bring it back to council so we can make more informed decision regarding this. Be the best group to take.
Go ahead, Angela.
I think if you look at an ad hoc committee structure, it requires three from council and two from residents.
That's why I said two.
So, um, yeah, maybe one of your homeowners to sit on the committee, not just to get information from might be a good idea.
Well, there's several homeowners, so I think maybe just getting information from them is probably the adequate thing to do.
Yeah, but you need a second resident too. I believe. I could be wrong.
Through your worship, John, can we do this as an exploratory information gathering? Is there anything keeping Counselor Gabani and I from doing that? Or is the committee structure a better way to go?
My advice would be that the, uh, exploratory conversation is the best way to go as opposed to a full-fledged ad hoc committee. Under the auspices of the municipal act. So, uh, that's there. And, and just a comment, the reason it comes up every year is because they'll have a. An administrator type like myself, uh, saying, I'm sorry, but, uh. We have a responsibility for the roads and we can't act like a tenant and to drive a unlicensed vehicle over a sidewalk. Uh, making things unsafe is, uh, how, how there's an option. I haven't been able to find one. So perhaps an exploratory conversation would result in something where we could have a bylaw. And there would have to be some form of exemption, although I don't understand exactly how it'd be structured. Uh, to put it in there and, um, let's bring it back to council for review. But from an administrative, uh, responsibility, uh, we would have to just sort of bring forward the exact same thing that we brought forward. So, um, I, I believe that conversation is best, uh, to take place so that council has, uh. Uh, the full right to make every decision. Council can make a, a decision on a bylaw to exempt whatever. But we also have a responsibility on administrative side to say that you should be following the, uh, protocols and, and best practices.
That's your, and just to comment, your worship through you. If we're concerned about unlicensed vehicles going over sidewalks and certain roadways, then it's a lot more than just one. One or two or three properties that were brought to our attention by many, many snow removal companies, trailer vehicles to clear snow, whether it's an ATV or otherwise. And that's quite the slippery slope to be going down. If that's the reasoning or one of the reasons behind it, we would have to clamp down on a number of different operations in order to make that. Everybody involved. So I believe this conversation of the variance would probably be the better way to go.
Angela.
I have a really silly question, but I didn't realize loaders were licensed to start with. And if that's the case, then what about people who take their snow blowers out onto the road to come back into their property? From an angle, does that mean they're in contravention too?
Okay.
I'm just, I, I'm puzzled. So, yes, more clarification would be good.
Okay, so, no, I don't think they are, but they have certain requirements they need. They're not, probably not licensed, but they are requirements that they need. They flashing lights, uh, yield signs on the back or. Yeah, so. Okay, so we defer this, uh, motion also? Next, next meeting begins in a nine, has to because of snow be flying by then. Okay, thank you very much. Item twelve, general business schedule of accounts. Be resolved that council received the following schedule as presented. Schedule number twenty one, twenty twenty one dash eighteen in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents. Move her in a second or Matt and Joe, any questions on the schedule? All in favor, Harry? Motion for which prior notice has been given, we have none. Marriage report, we have done notice of motion, council updates. None? Close session, be resolved that council convened a close session as per section two thirty nine of the municipal act two thousand and one as amended. In order to address a matter pertaining to subsection to the personal matter of an identified identifiable individual. Including municipal for school board employee. I'll move her in a second or please. Bill and Matt. All in favor? Thank you.
Are we breaking for just a minute?
Oh, make it a quick minute. We got a lot of discussion to do, but yeah, we could take a little break, I guess.
Okay, I just, I, yeah.
And nobody in the waiting room. Okay. Confirmation by law be resolved that by law number twenty twenty one dash thirty four being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council. Of the corporate from town of Cobalt be taken as read a first, second and third time and finally passed this twelfth day of October twenty twenty one. And further, that said by law be signed by the mayor and clerk and recorded in the bylaw. We'll run a second or. Doug and Joe, all in favor? Harry. Twenty one adjournment be resolved that the regular meeting of council be adjourned at. Eight forty four, move her in a second or Pat, Matt, Matt and Bill, all in favor, Harry. Thank you, folks.